Well, good, good morning to some, afternoon to others and an evening to still others. Thank you for joining us for this consultation, civil society consultation to advance a UN special session on disarmament. I'm very pleased to be here moderating this session. The sponsors of this event are the Canadian Pugwash Group, the Canadian Network for the Abolition of Nuclear Weapons, the SOAS University of London Strategic Concept for the Removal of Arms and Proliferation Project, SCRAP, and Oxfam, who I work for. So it's a, I think we're going to have a very interesting series of discussions. And at the beginning now, I'm going to ask Professor Dan Plesch, Professor of Diplomacy and Strategy at SOAS University of London and Director of the SCRAP Weapons Project, to kick us off. Over to you, Dan.
Thank you, Martin. But like you, I'm juggling screens, but we'll see how we get on. So, Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I want to extend my thanks to Paul Meyer and Canadian Pugwash for organising this event and to all of you who are attending for what promises to be a most important and instructive event. And to our distinguished colleagues from Brazil, from the Office of Disarmament Affairs, and of course, Oxfam International. The question before us is, do we urgently need a special meeting of the United Nations General Assembly devoted to disarmament? Well, fortuitously or unfortunately, the Bulletin of Atomic Scientists has just told us that the doomsday clock is still stuck at ninety seconds to midnight. So something perhaps needs to be done. As the seconds seem to tick inexorably down to doomsday, are we really to allow ourselves to go quietly into that inferno that is already engulfing more and more of the world? Or are we to restore or establish some level of sanity and stability? And if we are to reverse course, can the United Nations be of value? You might see these as rhetorical questions, but for many organisations and some states, they aren't taken for granted. Now, part of that answer lies in lessons from the last century and where we need to be informed by our history but not be prisoners of it. I will briefly discuss the three previous special sessions of the General Assembly devoted to disarmament, which are now, for many, lost almost in the midst of time, but some colleagues were present and active at them. These took place in nineteen seventy-eight, in nineteen eighty-two, and in nineteen eighty-eight. If you look up those terms, the UN Office of Disarmament Affairs website will briefly, will rapidly bring you to the key documents for all of these three meetings. And it doesn't take you long to delve into them to see the quality and depth with which states and civil society were looking at some all-too-familiar issues in those days. There is also, in looking at further considerations that the UN has had of this matter in up to twenty seventeen, the brief and very authoritative study, these two things don't often go together, brevity and the authority, but the study by Randy Riddell of the three SSODs is remarkably instructive, one-stop shopping, one might say, for anyone who wants to get involved. Now, for the first of these meetings, half a century ago, there were still some seventy thousand nuclear weapons in the world. And despite what was called détente and the nineteen seventy-two US USSR Strategic Arms Limitation Treaty and the Anti-Ballistic Missile Treaty of seventy-two, nevertheless, arms racing was then still accelerating in quality and quantity, and the US and USSR fought out bloody proxy wars and installed dictatorships of their own ideology through much of the world. In those days then, particularly the non-aligned movement, neutral states in Europe and civil society, pressed the superpowers to take further action and through such measures as nuclear weapon-free zones, applied pressure to them. Then, in nineteen seventy-eight, the UN General Assembly convened its first special session of the General Assembly on disarmament, which met across two months that summer, with some hundred and forty states engaged and wide representation from civil society at that time, despite the absence of the internet and reliance upon what we now call snail mail for communication. Even fax was a distant dream at that point. We have put the documents on the SCRAP website from this first meeting along with many of the British diplomatic documents of that negotiation for anyone who wants to do a further deep dive into all of that. This meeting, this first meeting of the on disarmament was in the tradition of the very first decisions of the United Nations back in nineteen forty-six on atomic energy, looking for controls. And in nineteen seventy-eight, despite the international pressures, there was a final document which contained a wealth of aspirational policy used to frame global diplomatic processes on weapons control. Now, as is often the case, states are far happier to sign on to a high-sounding and flowery and aspirational rhetoric than to do something about it. And one saw when the states came back in nineteen eighty-two, that with a re-intensification of the extremely intense Cold War period, that little substance had been achieved. But nevertheless, for people contemplating a new meeting of the General Assembly, it's worth looking at that work and thinking what equivalent paragraphs might suit their particular interests of their civil society or their states to include the next time we come to do this. Perhaps more fundamentally though, the special session and the UN agreed an overall concept of general disarmament, what one should be aspiring to and to approach disarmament as a holistic concept rather than in a fragmentary way. And that, I think, is quite instructive to the present period when such efforts as do exist tend to be looking at particular trumps of trees in the forest rather than a comprehensive approach to, excuse me, stretching the metaphor to forest management. A number of the themes of that time through seventy-eight into the eighties are, I think, extremely important and have been somewhat neglected of late. And in particular, the connection between disarmament and development, where this is perhaps in the background of some efforts in Africa and elsewhere, but the connection between the two isn't as explicit as it used to be. And in the spirit of linkage, one may think, and we had some discussions a couple of weeks ago in Geneva, that we need to be thinking about the human right to peace and disarmament and connecting human rights and disarmament in ways which perhaps haven't been done before. Now, that's a brief introduction to the policy agenda of the time. But what the General Assembly did decide back in nineteen seventy-eight was to create new institutions and revitalise institutions of disarmament machinery. First, one may mention the creation of the United Nations Institute for Disarmament Research, UNIDIR, which continues to this day to produce analysis, research of the highest quality on issues as diverse as space weapons, AI. The issues of the moment, if you go and look at UNIDIR, you get an extremely high quality and, I have to say, broader than American-centric analysis coming from UNIDIR, which is, I think, of great value. If UNIDIR's success in its own way is remarkable, perhaps contrariwise, the Disarmament Commission, designed to be an engine of policy, has sadly, although it meets regularly in New York, sadly has not fulfilled its expectations in producing concrete proposals and ideas for policy development as many people had hoped for. There are, of course, exceptions to all of this, and you'll forgive me if, as they say, I like my students to say in their essays, for reasons of space and time, I can only deal with these issues in a summary form. But perhaps the largest creation was the Conference on Disarmament, itself building on earlier structures in the UN on disarmament. But the Conference on Disarmament, which now has about a third of all UN members as members of the CD, was created to be the multilateral forum for the negotiation of disarmament. And this perhaps is where a good deal of the controversy around the machinery today comes to focus. And the CD has a number of important achievements, not least, I think, the Chemical Weapons Convention. And without that convention, while one can certainly point to violations in Syria, although attention might be given to the large quantities of Syrian weapons that the UN were able to destroy with the Assad regime's agreement. But more broadly, chemical weapons, nerve gas and so on, are not the routine armaments of artillery units of Russia and the Western States and air forces and missile forces. And without the Chemical Weapons Convention, the armies that we see deployed in various parts of the world and air forces would still be equipped with chemical weapons. And I think it's not sufficiently noted what a tremendous achievement the Chemical Weapons Convention has been overall. And when one talks about the potential for eliminating verifiably an entire class of weapons of mass destruction, the CWC does stand out as a very important achievement, notwithstanding some recent problems. But that aside, and since then, for a substantial chunk of a century, the CD has been logjammed. It has an overall agenda. They can barely or rarely agree that agenda. And many people feel that the aspirations of nineteen seventy-eight with respect to advancing the disarmament process through this multilateral forum has failed as a piece of machinery. Failure was also a feature of the nineteen eighty-two and nineteen eighty-eight special sessions. They didn't agree final documents, and that, in a way, should draw a line under them. But it isn't quite that simple, I think. The political momentum, the engagement of states, the fact that the superpowers were forced through these processes to engage not merely, if you excuse the reference, to engage in an arms race and a space race, but also a peace race, that they had an audience amongst their client states and those states they sought to woo in the disarmament and peace arena. And the issues that were raised, while not succeeded, didn't reach fruition in the UN, served to provide a context in which the South in particular shaped debates around which the powers in Europe and the US and USSR came to reach agreements in the late Cold War. There are a couple of, I think, big differences, which I'll point out as three between then and now, and then get my remarks rapidly to a close as my clock is ticking. First of all, fairly obviously, while we have less armaments, the complexities of these armaments and the number of states possessing weapons of mass destruction and advanced missiles only has to look at the news to see that these problems have become more widespread and more complex than they were even during the Cold War. To compound matters, for the first time since the nineteen sixties today, we have arms racing without any real substantive efforts at arms control and disarmament. And for people of the present generation unaware of the fact that in previous times public opinion and domestic opinion, even in dictatorships, saw the need for arms control at some level, simply because they had lived through a world war or two world wars, they knew what they might be in for a little if things went horribly wrong again. And that, I think, is at one of the disasters of the present moment, is that that memory has gone and with it much of the pressure for a disarmament process. So we have armament without disarmament, which was not the case in the seventies and eighties, however weak those efforts may have been. But, and I try to close on an optimistic note, the General Assembly today has much more achievements and strength, weak though it still is, than it had in the seventies and the eighties. One only has to look at the UN Framework Agreement on Climate Change. That process, and now annual process, was a child of the General Assembly. And while the climate crisis is severe, there are few, I think, who would argue that one would be better off if the UN CCC had never happened in the first place. Within our own remit of disarmament, of course, the General Assembly has played a very important and creative role, partly because of the problems in the CD. The still extant Comprehensive Nuclear Test Ban Treaty of nineteen ninety-six is a creation of the General Assembly. The Landmines Cluster Arms Trade Treaty, Programme of Action Small Arms and Light Weapons, all were substantially General Assembly decisions, with negotiations attending to the General Assembly, but ultimately created by and in the end authorised by the General Assembly. And finally, of course, like it or not, the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, the TPNW, was a negotiation directly of the General Assembly, directly related to the General Assembly. And that, I think, this group of agreements, despite the difficulties we face on the major conventional nuclear weapons front, do provide a strong basis for thinking that the General Assembly today has more ability, more experience, a more customary behaviour in dealing with weapons issues than it did in the seventies and eighties. So there is perhaps much that we can build on, much that we can learn from the special sessions of the seventies and eighties. And while we should look at those achievements, I don't think we should be imprisoned in pessimism by the failures of the final two in eighty-two and eighty-eight. So that brings me at five nineteen. I think I had about fifteen, twenty minutes, Martin. So the bit look, I can stop before you start being rude to me.
Thank you, Dan. You're coming in very much on time and perhaps a little to my surprise, no overrun at all. So the first thing I'm going to say is to remind participants that if you'd like to ask a question, please pop it in the Q and A function of Zoom and then we can put them to to Dan for you. I'm going to just kick off the questioning by using my position as the moderator today to do that. And it was an excellent summary, I thought, Dan, of the successes and failures of the past and the way the machinery of disarmament at the UN has worked. And as a representative of Oxfam, I of course couldn't help but notice your link between development and disarmament, which I think is absolutely right and something that we concentrate on. And I think that as time has moved on over the last forty-five years or so, since the first special session, that link has become more apparent to people, but what has also changed, I think, is that the politics of disarmament have shifted. Back in those days, we were very much in a bipolar world where East negotiated with West and in particular, you know, the Russians of the Soviet Union negotiated with the Americans and others could participate, but that's where the action was. One of the changes in the General Assembly that you've mentioned is, I think, with the countries in the global south. And I think Ambassador D'Amico, that Brazil is a prime example of this, have really begun to take a leadership role across a wide range of issues and to refuse to accept that policy is dictated from the West or from the North as a whole. So how would you see that, Dan, shifting the way that a negotiation in a fourth special session, towards a fourth special session and in the kinds of issues that come up, might change things in the future?
Contrariwise, though, of course, you have a different sort of bloc in the European Union, which now rocks up with, you know, getting on for thirty states with an agreed position and NATO as well. And these large Western blocs are perhaps rather more coherent sadly than sometimes the the non-aligned movement. So that perhaps is an argument against the diversity of power. But in general, I think that Brazil, states within the BRICS, the Chinese even perhaps, are looking, look at this environment and see that disarmament may serve their national interests if the issue is brought to them. And I also feel that once you get states having to consider and civil society having to consider different options, then in a sense bureaucratic wheels start to be forced into action. And at the moment, we have a situation where, in a sense, the bureaucracies, the states, aren't having to react. And I suppose I would hope that if we are looking at any revised machinery, and I don't think the UN FCC is a model, but it's an example of a vibrant continuing process which produces some results. And I think one might think about that as a central continuing role for the General Assembly and its delegation to a minority of states in the CD in this much more interconnected and vibrant world is one way in which you might think to move things forward. But again, compared to the inexorable clicking of the clock down, it isn't that I think that a fourth special session is a panacea. And if other people have better and more concrete ideas, I think one should rally around them, but at the moment, there is an extreme shortage of constructive proposals. So while this may work, not work, what else and better might we offer?
Yeah, that's certainly, I think, an important observation. There's very little sign, as you said, that the CD itself will come up with anything much in the way of change at the moment. We see some very small proposals for tinkering around the edge a little bit, but no no really dynamic ideas about change. And there is definitely, I think, from our perspective, a need to tie together the kinds of agreements that, you know, I've worked on for Oxfam, that Oxfam worked on before me, the so-called humanitarian disarmament agreements, landmines ban, clusters, the Arms Trade Treaty and latterly the TPNW. But there is definitely a need for an overarching perspective, an overarching change. And I think that one of the reasons that we're supporting the idea, we as Oxfam are supporting SCRAP in the fourth special session, pursuit for fourth special session is precisely the need for a regalvanisation and for an overall umbrella and looking back at, you know, just how bad the international situation was in the nineteen seventies and yet, you know, people looked at that and, as you say, Drew, decided to hope and decided to work for change. So that's a mood that we need to to rebuild. That's the word I'm looking for. Okay, so I'm seeing we have not got questions in the Q and A at this time. So
Martin, I think Ambassador Paul Meyer.
Oh, I didn't see that. Yes, Ambassador, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Yes, thanks, thanks, Martin and Dan. I wanted to actually pick up on a couple of things in terms of Dan's remarks and indeed what you flagged as well, this crucial development, disarmament linkage, which has weakened over time. I'm struck with recollections of how prominent the issue of excessive military expenditure, I believe was always framed, was very salient in UN activity and discourse that I think could potentially be a hook for generating more interest with a fourth onslaught, because it would be an opportunity to bring this up and align it with the Sustainable Development Goals, this ongoing twenty thirty agenda. Because I would think so many in the developing world are cautious that renewal of arms racing among great powers comes at their expense and not just in terms of additional risks to their security, but also to impinge on their prospects for wellbeing and prosperity going forward. You know, we're talking about unfinished business of the UN, I mean, call Article twenty-six of the Charter and it's the obligation to develop a regime to govern armaments that would minimise the expenditure on such items to that minimum required for self-defence. And so that theme is one that has not been sufficiently developed and I think it would resonate very well at this point in time to bring that once more into the consciousness. And again, the special session could be one vehicle for doing that. And if you allow me just a second reaction to Dan's great little survey, I mean, he talked about SSLD one, you know, generating a wealth of aspirations. And I think that's true, but I'd also recall that it wasn't just aspirational goals that were being articulated. It was an architecture for the disarmament machinery of the United Nations. And the machinery is a very concrete item. And I think we all recognise that the intervening forty-five years, certain problems in that machinery have become evident. And so I think, again, certain problems in that machinery have become evident. And so I think, again, one of the factors militating for a fourth special session is actually just to deal, review the effectiveness of that machinery. And as the Secretary General has flagged, you know, maybe it is timely to review and reform existing machinery. So I just wanted to throw those points out too. Thanks.
Thank you, Ambassador. I think those, yes, absolutely, extremely extremely well expressed and I think important important points and certainly it's been from time to time when we've managed to bring the SDGs into a a disarmament or arms control debate as Oxfam was able to do with in the Arms Trade Treaty Conference of States parties a few years ago. It it does, it it does engage a whole different audience and is is it works well. So thank you. Well, I'm I'm going to go on now. Since I see there's still nothing in the Q and A, I'm going to go on to the to our second session. This this session will will deal the key problems with the existing machinery and why SSOD four has not been held. We have two speakers, Cesar Harameo, Executive Director of Project Plowshares and Chair of the Canadian Pugwash Group, and Dr. Adedegi Ebo, Director and Deputy to the High Representative of the UN Office for Disarmament Affairs. We're very pleased and honored to have you both here with us today. And Caesar, I'll ask you to to begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin, and thank you, everybody. It's a great pleasure for me for me to be here today and 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 a pleasure to to share this space with my my fellow panelists. I I greatly appreciate the fact that we're that we're paying attention to this issue and and to ways in which we can move forward this this notion of convening and against SSOD, a special session on disarmament. I have a few comments in this regard and specific to the to the subject of the of this of this session. I it won't be an exhaustive presentation just because time is is somewhat somewhat limited, but I do I do have a couple of reflections. The first general comment I will make before I get to some specific sort of challenges in in the machinery. The first general reflection is that in my view, in my experience, in the experience of Project Plowshares, following diverse multilateral arms control and disarmament processes, is that for virtually every single disarmament challenge today, there are solutions out there, good solutions, concrete solutions. So 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 I I think it's important to remind ourselves that, you know, there has been a lot of creative thinking in terms of of diplomatic approaches, of multilateral approaches to to addressing even the thorniest governance challenges related to disarmament and arms control. And I and when I have the opportunity to go to the UN, New York, Geneva, Vienna, I see that there's always on the table concrete solutions that, if implemented in good faith, would yield considerable progress moving ahead the disarmament agenda, the international disarmament agenda of the of the of the global community. And oftentimes, what we witness at these forums is really an exercise in trying to overcome resistance, in trying to overcome the obstinacy of of some states that want to preserve the status quo for a variety of reasons. But 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 it remains true that the solutions are out there for thorny issues, for nuclear disarmament, for 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 climate concerns, for the protection of civilians, for new technologies. There are well-defined proposals, well-developed, that have been that have been getting a lot of thought. And and yeah, and the fact that they're not being implemented is not is not an indictment on the proposals themselves, but rather than but rather on on the states that are blocking progress and 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 I won't name any right this moment, but it tends to tends to be generally a same grouping of states that really blocks progress and concrete disarmament measures. But it's not that they're absent from the public discourse. They're out there. Secondly, I'd like to say that a a new special session on disarmament would be very timely, among other reasons, because it could it could address contemporary security challenges. The international security landscape has evolved considerably since certainly since nineteen seventy seventy eight and in the subsequent sessions on disarmament, including advances in technology, including emerging threats, including the interconnectedness with climate, including the interconnectedness with the with the Sustainable Development Goals, with development more generally, et cetera. So so I think it would be very timely. But it would, it's still important for us to remember that that a special session on disarmament in itself does not create political will for disarmament. It may contribute to it. It may be a vehicle to help mobilize political will towards disarmament. But I think that the political will is not created by the session on disarmament itself. It is it is something that needs to happen and states need to come to the table with the with the with the desire to a genuine desire, however measured and however vague that that concept is, but a genuine desire to move forward on disarmament. And and unfortunately, if that is lacking, we can have all the special special sessions on disarmament we want and and we can have statements of good intentions, as we have had in the nuclear disarmament regime, et cetera, that are going to be collecting dust, you know, in the in the subsequent years. So so I just want to emphasize this pairing of, you know, it's 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 sometimes seductive to to focus primarily on the machinery. And that is, you know, that is a crucial part of the equation, the machinery. But it's all too easy to blame the machinery and and sometimes even to blame the forum. You know, the CCW is not working, therefore let's move it to elsewhere. There's Conference on Disarmament, it's not working, therefore let's move it elsewhere. There is something to it, and there are, of course, procedural blocks that are that are that are more prone to happening in certain forums. But state positions are what state positions are. So if states are not ready to move forward in good faith, earnestly, on, say, nuclear disarmament, on autonomous weapons systems, on the arms trade, et cetera, in a given forum, it's not like that because it's moved to a different forum or because there's a new session convened, all of a sudden, those 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 instances of opposition will cease. So once again, you know, you gotta have the the political will required to 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 really make it happen. So pairing political will with the machinery, the machinery alone will not yield progress unless and until you have the necessary political will. So in my in my, those are just introductory remarks. So my brief presentation in terms of specific obstacles or or reasons why we haven't we're not making progress towards a special session on disarmament. I'd like to to highlight five, five issues that I think that we can we can consider. Once again, it's not an exhaustive list, but I think these are issues that that if addressed in one way or another, could really pave the way a little bit to to hopefully having a a special session on disarmament. So the first of five, the first issue that I would highlight has to do with the the transformation that we are witnessing toward a more multipolar world order. And I think that in itself is a contributing factor that 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 may that may prove to be a blockage or or an obstacle towards moving earnestly toward 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 a special session on disarmament with, you know, a more assertive Russia, a rising China, et cetera. We are really at the dawn of an era with, I believe, in which the the United States will soon cease to be the sole superpower, the sole hegemon, the sole dominant force in the in the international community. For better or worse, I think China's rise is somewhat unstoppable. It's a reality that cannot be wished away. Unfortunately, however, I think there is a bit of a of a self-fulfilling prophecy dynamic in the in with regard to the notion that this will be some sort of adversarial relationship between the West and China, or more specifically between the United States and China. And I think that this alone, the rise of China, and there's other examples of of sort of other powers trying to 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 get into the the sort of the superpower club. But the rise of China in particular, I will, I will, I would predict that will be a reason cited, not just by observers like ourselves, but by by governments themselves as a reason to pause any efforts towards towards moving earnestly towards towards disarmament. We've already seen in not just in the United States, but in a host of countries, and we will, I suspect we will see more of it, using the rise of China as a justification for increased or inflated military budgets. And we will see more of that in the coming years, where where this looming threat or or what is described as a threat or perceived as a threat will be will be the pretext or the reason given for for really inflated military budgets in and for for under the arguments of preparedness and readiness and strategic leverage and competition, et cetera, to and 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 these inflated military budgets, of course, are not necessarily going to be conducive to disarmament efforts, including a special session on disarmament. So that's so 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 that's the first point, really, the power shifts that we are witnessing that cannot be wished away. And that even though I think there is no sense of inevitability about the adversarial nature of about the adversarial nature of the relationship between China and the West, and these are other rising powers. There is no sense of inevitability, but all the signs to this point are really worrying. I I don't think that the 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 way in this in this looming competition with China and others into the near future, I don't think is being framed in a constructive manner. And this is and this is, of course, a two two-way street, and both China and the United States need to show a willingness really to 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 frame this 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 reality of a rise in China in the in a more constructive manner and in a through through diplomacy, collaboration, et cetera, rather than through competition and including as it relates to competition in the military realm. So that's the shift in multilateralism. A second point, why a an obstacle, I think, for for a special session on disarmament is that I sense a profound loss of credibility and erosion in the credibility in the in the multilateral disarmament processes that do exist, that are taking place as we await a special session on disarmament. So of course, we're waiting for, we're referring in this case to SSOD, capital letter, a special session on disarmament, but sessions on disarmament, generally speaking, happen regularly, very important sessions on disarmament at the United Nations, once again, Geneva, in Vienna, in 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 New York, at the First Committee, at the NPT, at the Arms Trade Treaty, at the CCW, at, you know, various political processes specific to disarmament. So we so so there is some, you know, some precedent. But the fact of the matter is that these processes are are losing tremendous credibility in terms of their their failure to deliver on the on the premise upon which they are based, on the failure to deliver on the promise of of disarmament whether in the nuclear realm and in the conventional weapons realm and or or other or other instances. Take, for instance, the nuclear disarmament regime, you know, it's it's been it's been almost eighty years since Hiroshima and and more than half a century since the NPT came into force, and now we have the Treaty on the Prevention of Nuclear Weapons. And 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 still, as I I think Dan noted at the beginning, the building of the atomic scientists as a as an example, still, the risk of nuclear weapons use is as high as it has ever been. There are there is no credible observer that would say, well, at least we're in the right direction towards disarmament, towards reaching the goals of the Nuclear Nuclear Protection Treaty. Quite the contrary, we're going in the exact opposite direction, and the international community is taking notice, civil society is taking notice, progressive states are taking notice, but the 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 reality is that the Arms Trade Treaty, the promise of a better regulated international arms trade that avoids unscrupulous dealings, irresponsible dealings, you know, arms trade that that enables human rights violations, sustains autocratic regimes, perpetuates perpetuates autocrats in power, exacerbates armed conflict, et cetera. So we have that treaty, which was welcomed with much enthusiasm, including by Project Plowshares and by myself. But the reality is that unscrupulous arms dealings are, you know, are through the roof, through the roof. And so 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 we have this parallel reality where where these these positive efforts exist, but reality is quite stubborn and, you know, the the behavior doesn't seem to change. And this has led once again to a to a disillusionment with the real impact of these disarmament processes and their and their limitations, that once again, due to a lack of political will and and other reasons, including the lack of enforcement mechanisms embedded in the treaty, et cetera, are not yielding the the results that they that they are supposed to. So there is this this erosion in the in the in the in the, yeah, in the in the perception, in the positive perception of what these processes can yield. A third item. And and at the risk of sounding, you know, a few decades past past the the prime of this of this term, but the old military industrial complex, the arms industry, the private sector, is very hard to see how we can move earnestly towards a towards a concrete disarmament, including measures such as an effective SSOD, special session on disarmament. When we have this beast, this monster, you know, that has become the 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 global arms industry, this sector that has an influence on policy, that has an interconnected interconnectedness with the national security apparatus of virtually every nation in which they they operate, and with this vicious, you know, profit-driven mentality. So if you picture Apple Computer, you know, iPhones, year after year after year, they have to position billions of dollars of iPhones into the market, or they'll go broke. It's not one year. It's every single year, or they'll go broke. Every single year, they have to position billions of dollars in iPhones into the market. And that by by, you know, in a in a similar vein, the arms industry has to position into the global market billions of dollars every single year, not just this year, not just last year, or the year before, next year, and the year after, and the year after that, and the year after that, every year, billions of dollars and growing. Or they go broke. So it's hard to conceive really of how the international community can make a real progress towards disarmament when you have these billions of dollars, you know. And there's a very, very sort of sort of unsophisticated test, which is that why do you think it's going to happen? Test, you know, why do you think it's going to happen with this excessive accumulation of of weapons, including the most volatile areas in the world, including two countries where where there are already signs of strategic competition and volatility, et cetera. So this is, you know, this is a sector that it's that I don't have the answers, but has not been reined in and has tremendous influence on prospects on prospects for disarmament and is valued at more than a hundred and thirty billion dollars every year. So there are, so there are challenges, you know, and just by the mere existence of this of this very, very powerful sector that has an influence on policy, a direct influence on policy, that has a revolving door, republic officials are former former directors of these companies and vice versa. So so it's really not a pretty picture in terms of the of the impact of the arms industry has. A fourth item that I think is having today lots of impact on the prospects for 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 against SOD and disarmament more generally has to do with the impact of new technologies, so the the impact of new military technologies and the rapidity with which these are being integrated into military systems, which is which is almost unprecedented. So if if our starting point is that there is almost by definition a gap between policymaking and reality, where policymaking and normative efforts are trying to play catch up all the time, you know, with with reality. In the case of emerging technologies, this gap is not just wider, but getting wider exponentially because of the rapidity, you know, cyber, artificial intelligence, three D printing, you name it. These are, these are, these are going to have an impact in the in the in the realm of arms control. And I think right now, in the current juncture, we're at a place whereby the 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 major players are in a bit of a wait-and-see approach. And even though if they, the policymakers in the US, in China, in Russia, in Canada, et cetera, they identify at least some of the risks inherent to these technologies. There is also this drive of not falling behind. You know, we we like, we recognize the risk of this technology, but the risk is greater if China has it and we don't. But from the Chinese perspective, it's a similar, it's a similar approach, you know, there is this this tension about not falling behind with the with the would-be adversaries, et cetera. And that is driving great investments in 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 capacity building, in in research and development, et cetera, of these of these technologies with military applications. So we're really at a grave need for some sort of arms control two point O, to put it in those terms, because we haven't even resolved, you know, the old hardware issues. We haven't resolved the conventional weapons. We haven't resolved the 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 nuclear, the the nuclear weapons. But not instead of, but in addition to these old challenges, now the international community needs to contend with the challenges and and the normative void that is that is inherent with the whole situation of the technology. So that is that is an obstacle in itself and will have a bearing on prospects for disarmament. And fifth and last, the last point I I would mention in terms of of difficulties in getting to SSOD has to do with the lack of political leadership for disarmament at high levels. has to do with the lack of political leadership for disarmament at high levels. We don't see it. We welcome, or I welcome certainly, the work of the U N Secretary General. I have the opportunity to be involved in some conversations about, you know, some input for the new agenda for peace, et cetera, the recognition of disarmament as integral to any global agenda for peace. But at the political level, in national leaderships, et cetera, in the West, we don't see clear leadership for disarmament. I see it as a missed opportunity for, if you were a political leader in the West or elsewhere. But the fact of the matter is that there is no political leadership. We often hear in the multilateral system about certain processes or efforts that are deemed to be somewhat successful, that it was an idea whose time has come, you know? What does this mean in practice? In my experience, an idea whose time has come means an idea that now has state champions. That's what makes the difference. If you pose the question to a number of states, you know, would you support an S S O D? Yes, 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 okay. But who is willing to invest resources diplomatically, staff-wise, you know, money-wise, to convene meetings, to move the issue forward, and then perhaps you don't have as many takers? So once again, I think champions and champion states, a core group of a few or one champion states is, has proven to be critical in other multilateral processes. And I think likewise, in the case of prospects for disarmament, I think you need you need a core group of champions to accompany the Secretary General and to push really for a special session on disarmament, or else it will not happen. And by championing, once again, I mean investing the necessary resources, diplomatic and otherwise, to convene meetings, to host, you know, to expend a bit of money and to move the issue forward. Otherwise, it will be like a generally good idea out there that doesn't get traction in the end. I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Cesar. There's a lot for us to think about there. Before I move to any questions, I'm going to bring Dr. Ebo in for his presentation. So, Dr. Ebo, thank you very much for being with us this evening, and over to you.
Thank you very much, Martin. I am very happy to be here. I feel already actually quite rewarded by my presence, listening to the previous remarks. I feel almost after listening to Cesar that he's made the presentation on behalf of both of us. And I usually wouldn't have much to add to what he has said. I also wish that I had not been presented as Dr. Ebo, because that also puts some expectation of something intellectual when I find myself caught in this role as a bureaucrat. But yet I am being provoked, you know, by what I've heard and the title to which, by which I'm referred to say something a little bit more than the usual diplomatic skill that a U N bureaucrat would come with. So I'm a bit conflicted, to be honest. So in the spirit of honesty, let me say from the very beginning that I am not one of those convicts that focus on the mechanics of disarmament. I'm deeply convinced that if you summarize what Cesar said, what Dan said, it is really the politics of disarmament that really is the issue. We call it political will, we call it multipolarity, irrational credibility, and all that. But it is down to the politics, and that is why there are no takers. We heard about the lack of leadership. We do have leadership. Ambassador Damico is here from Brazil, you know, but leadership from where? You know, and I heard Cesar talking about Western leadership. And the question is, why must that leadership be dependent on geography and so on? So I am a bit conflicted in terms of whether to be candid or to be diplomatic. So let me attempt to be a bit in the middle. In terms of the history and the background, I think the first speaker, Dan dealt very well with that. I don't need to repeat what he said. In terms of the role of the first committee, really as the consensus-building part of the machinery, the Disarmament Commission being the deliberative arm of the machinery, and the C D being, well, supposedly and expectedly negotiations. And from that, what I think I would focus on quickly is the, what are the current trends that we have seen and developed? I would argue that in recent decades, the roles and functions of these organs have been deeply affected by developments in the international political and security situation. It's not so much just multipolarity, it's a type of multipolarity that we are having, in which we are having really new, emerging new political division of labor, if you like, in which there's a lot of political chest beating. You know, almost as if mine is bigger than yours kind of thing when it comes to nuclear weapons. The cacophony and the talk without much listening. Everyone has their messages, but very little listening. So it's actually the kind of multipolarity we have had that has really been a stumbling block in terms of not just disarmament machinery, I'll say disarmament more broadly. Now, the situation that we have since 1978 certainly has changed, becoming more multipolar, becoming polarized, and so on. But part of that actually is the fact that in terms of the role of the Global South, and this is my point about new political division of labor. The Global South is now, or has been questioning, if you like, the, some of the normative presumptions of disarmament. And their view has been getting more prominent, including the talk we are now hearing about development, which has always been there in Article 26, but it's not something that previously got more attention. But now the Global South is saying, we have to talk about development. We have to talk about prevention. We have to talk about human security. And in terms of the three tripods of nuclear issues, which is peaceful uses, non-proliferation, and disarmament, the Global South is saying, why is non-proliferation such a priority and peaceful uses are not? You know, so the Global South is challenging that normative order and almost as if we have to be reminded of the difference between the ownership of the disarmament regime and acquiescence to it. And the Global South seems to be saying that it is not enough to acquiesce. We also want to be in the driver's seat. We also want to be owners of the vehicle. And I would dare say that that is why you would have Ambassador Damico now in the role of what I would call, yes, leadership, you know, in pushing for a more progressive, more inclusive agenda. So as was rightly said previously, out of the three, the General Assembly, the C D, and the D C, it would appear that the General Assembly, in contrast, has emerged as the more dynamic, the more inclusive and the more productive engine within the disarmament machinery. And it has concluded four international instruments since 1999. It has progressively improved inclusivity of ad hoc processes. And this is as done through firstly, expanding the number of members of expert groups, mandating open-ended consultative meetings for such groups, increasing its resorts to open-ended working group, and providing for various forms of multi-stakeholder engagement. So relatively, I think, where we might have some hope is in the General Assembly. What I want to focus on quickly is what the Secretary General has put forward in his new agenda for peace. And I know Cesar mentioned it, and to say that that is not, or should not be simply seen as the view of the Secretariat, because the S G did take a lot of time to consult member states to include their thinking. So hopefully, this is not just the S G speaking. And the major focus of the S G in the new agenda for peace relates really to the strengthening of international governance and specifically updating what we know as our collective security machinery. Now, the new agenda for peace recognizes that as we enter into a new global era, the Summit of the Future, which will hold, I believe, next year, could provide a generational opportunity to address this critical issue. And in terms of that, there's Action 12 of the new agenda for peace, which is calling for urgent action to revitalize U N institutions, and is recommending that the General Assembly should continue to exercise its primary role for substantive deliberations in the field of disarmament in accordance with its rule and procedures. It should also agree on standards for the participation of other stakeholders in the work of its subsidiary organs in this area. To achieve meaningful reform, we think that we should establish an appropriate intergovernmental process to discuss how to achieve these goals and to consider the role, the timing, and the preparations of a special session of the General Assembly on disarmament. To answer the initial question, do we need an S S O D for? Yes, even urgently. But the question is when and how, and what that would constitute. In terms of the pathways that we could have on summit machinery, I think it's important to note that the S G is not calling at this juncture for a preparatory committee for S S O D four. I think that the general sense among governments, including leading proponents of S S O D four, some of whom are here, is that it could only be used fully convened when there is consensus. And I think we all agree that that consensus as of now is lacking. In addition, the present international security and political environment may not be conducive for an ambitious new consensus on disarmament. And we are not likely to obtain a vision or plan of action as ambitious, as comprehensive as S S O D one. So we need to be a bit humble and realistic in terms of our ambitions, given the current political environment. Now, I think governments already broadly recognize the need to reform the machinery. In this connection, it should be recalled that prior to S S O D one, if the history says me correctly, the General Assembly did convene an ad hoc committee on the review of the role of the U N in the field of disarmament, which was open to all member states. Now, that committee agreed to a number of important measures and reforms to strengthen the operation of both intergovernmental bodies and the role of the organization. A similar process, if is undertaken now, will produce, I think, a more tailored set of agreements on revitalizing the machinery without prejudice to a future S S O D four. That, I think, is possible. Some kind of initial ad hoc committee to start that conversation. Any form of interim agreement on reform could help clarify the scope and the potential outcome of an S S O D, therefore, and through this building consensus for its eventual convening. Therefore, we hope that the Summit of the Future could agree on the establishment of an open-ended working group to consider and make recommendations on revitalizing the role of the U N in disarmament. As a contribution to that process, the summit should also call for the Secretary General to prepare a substantive report based on the views of member states on these recommendations, including consideration of the role, the timing, the preparation of an S S O D four. So that is what I would say in terms of my remarks, but I want to go back to where I started. Just by using the example of, for example, the importance of multi-stakeholder attendance in disarmament deliberations. We are told every time, we are reminded about the charter and with the people. But if you look at disarmament, part of the deficit, I think, is that it is too, it has been approached as being too heavily international security and not sufficiently global security. Therefore, the role of the people element of civil society, of non-state actors in these deliberations and in these conversations, just a little reminder of what I think is the deficit and what needs to be addressed. And one of those things that member states have not yet been able to find, you know, a handle on, despite the fact that we all agree on the charter as with the people. At the end of the day, I would say that, not to belittle the point about importance of the machinery, and I'm not an engineer, but I think whatever machine you have for it to work, it's not simply the constituent parts of the machine and how they work, but the lubrication of that machine. So whatever the form of S S O D four, the lubrication of the machinery is key. And when I say lubrication, what do I mean? Those key principles that the Secretary General identified in the new agenda for peace, those key principles of trust, of solidarity, of universality are sorely missing in the international and in the global environment that we have right now, which is almost a zero-sum game, consistently, characteristically antagonistic. So in the absence of those principles of trust, of solidarity, and universality, whatever machinery is put in place is not going to last very long, because it will lack that lubrication. So in addition to the machinery, I think we also need to agree on what the principles of the machinery should be. And those principles must include inclusion, broad participation, and representation. In other words, it cannot and should not be only about the big powers, the big states. Indeed, it cannot and should not be only about states. So I go back to the issue of non-state participation. Who may not be the secondary actors in that conversation? States are, you know, the ones who drive the U N, but I don't think they will drive it very far in the absence of the voice of non-state actors, however they are characterized. So thank you. I have tried to, shall I say, bite my tongue and not be the bureaucrat. At the same time, tried to be a little provocative, and I hope, you know, that it's come across as such. Thank you so much.
Well, Dr. Ebo, thank you. Thank you so much for a really interesting presentation. I think far from being representative of a simple bureaucrat, you've given us a lot of food for thought. And obviously, as a representative of civil society, I'm encouraged that you think that forward progress may be possible, concrete forward progress may be possible in the coming year. We all have good hopes for the summit for the future. Now, I've got a couple of questions that have been put in the Q and A. And they're actually both on similar themes about Cesar's presentation. So the first one from Robin Collins says, picking up on just one of Cesar's five points, the weapons industry and complex, the obvious solution. the weapons industry and complex, the obvious solution is a transition of investment into something other than the military, more useful for security like climate and development. Investors don't care about the widget, they only care about profitability. Why don't we have more proposals, more focus in on in this direction in our circles? Are we just missing the boat? Or is this shift more complicated? Um, and then the the other question from Manuel Galileo is, um, uh, Manuel, I should say, the military balance analyst at Scrap Weapons. His question for Caesar is amongst the five points you outlined. Would you say that point three on the military industrial complex remains the hardest to tackle as an in- international community? Also, given that some points you raised appear to mirror the inherent architecture of the international system, which of the five points may be more attainable in the short term? So I think there's there's a a couple of um uh, tough questions for you there, Caesar.
Right. Uh, thank you.
Why aren't we making more progress?
Well, the million dollar question. Uh, thank you, Martin, and thank you, Robin and Manuel uh for for the pertinent comments and questions. Uh, on Robin's point, yes, I mean, I think that the the question of of economic conversion as to use as that term and and, you know, others have spoken of a Green New Deal and just those different formulations for 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 some sort of transition. I think there is something to that and, you know, uh, uh, to to oversimplify, you you know, uh, uh, and a manufacturer of armored vehicles in theory would have, you know, the necessary infrastructure to produce search and rescue vehicles or or ambulances and 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 things of that sort and still keep 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 the people employed and still be a a a driver for the economy. Uh, so yes, but I think there are limits to to that. I I think the arm industry is actually very good business. I mean, just from a profit perspective, if you're a shareholder that not that I would invest there, but but from a profit perspective, it's it's hard to beat, you know, it's hard to compete, you know, if you're making search and rescue vehicles to compete with 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 with, you know, armed drones or or armored vehicles or any number of 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 munitions. So I think the profit element is 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 going to be, is going to be a challenge. Now, I think the 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 lesson learned or the conclusion for the international community is that is that you gotta draw the line somewhere. I mean, if profit is the only consideration, then, you know, then it's a slippery slope from that perspective and, you know, why not sell to to weapons, to 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 drug cartels and, you know, I have that bad guys or authoritarian regimes, which which actually do get weapons. But um, but yeah, I think the the profit factor is is one, one, one difficulty in that economic conversion. And the second is that the, as I mentioned earlier, the interconnectedness with the national security apparatus of the country. I mean, it's not just a standalone industry, making widgets or making phones or making or making shoes. It's making weapons that are, you know, in intricately connected to 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 national security concerns, to national, to foreign policy priorities, to advancing, to advancing the notions to strategic competition, et cetera. So it's not just, you know, let's give the shareholders the same profit doing, making another product. That's part of it. And then and I think there's potentially exploring that further and having more concrete proposals on the table. But I but it is a unique industry, uh, uh, in as much as it is interconnected to the to to national security. So so there may be resistance regardless uh uh for to that. Uh, one example is is, you know, nuclear weapons and there have been, you know, for instance, on the money dimension of divestment campaigns, which I I've personally supported, et cetera. But there's the argument that, you know, for 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 nuclear abolition, I mean, the ultimate solution is not going to be to bankrupt the system. You know, that 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 that's that's a good advocacy tool, that's a good, you know, it 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 is somewhere it hurts sort of thing, but then then there's a national security element and the desire of the state itself to maintain that infrastructure. So so, yeah, a point well taken, Robin. And Manuel, you know, is this the the hardest to tackle, the point about the military industrial complex? A bit facetious, yes, except for the other four. You know, I mean, the these are, these are complex. I mean, I I see no short-term, you know, shift in the business as usual added to to the armed street. Unfortunately, we see a resurgence of the uh in the context of uh not that long ago, in the context of the of the of the still ongoing conflict in Ukraine, you know, we we are seeing uh more arms experts, we're seeing more domestic, you know, procurement, we're seeing, you know, as and now with the, you know, coupled with strategic competition, et cetera. Uh, yeah, the military industrial conflicts or the the arms industry is alive and well and having Christmas every day. I mean, the the profit margins really are are profound. But if you look at the others that I mentioned, and I mentioned honestly no particular order, um, yeah, the others are also thorny nuts to crack, if you will, you know, the 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 impact of new technologies, I think, were just at the dawn, really, of 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 a new era of technology, you know, of the integration of the of technology with military capabilities. And that that's that's just a a huge challenge and and the nature of the of the of this dimension is such that it's not just governments, it's research labs, it's universities, it's private companies, et cetera, all coming, you know, into this mix of new technologies. That will be quite challenging. The loss of credibility in the regimes, unless they start to yield concrete uh results, I think that that trend is just going to continue. Look at the MPT, which is, which is, uh, you know, called the cornerstone of the global nuclear disarmament, the non-proliferation regime, it's still it's still uh uh in my estimation, the cornerstone, but the credibility hit that it has taken recently, it's 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 almost farcical, you know, it's like like a theatrical going to the meetings, the same issues, the same rejection and the same lack of outcome time after time after time. So 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 you're going to continue to see that trend of loss of credibility. Um, yeah, I think the one that could be tackled, I mean, in theory, uh, or one that could be tackled easily is the the idea of leadership for disarmament. And and I I take Dr. Evil's point very well that this leadership need not be confined to the West or to the North or anything like that. And indeed, we have seen, you know, increasingly vocal and militant uh, uh, small and middle powers, you know, having a having a say and taking a stand on some issues and 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 making the point that the fact that that they themselves don't have nuclear weapons, for instance, or they themselves are not developing autonomous weapons systems, does not does not exclude them from the conversation. So we're seeing other, you know, other forms of leadership, but uh, but at the end of the day, we had the, you know, the the situation exemplified by the Treaty of Provision of Nuclear Weapons, where you have the leadership, you have the the, you know, a critical mass, so to speak, in terms of numbers, et cetera. But everyone recognizes, okay, the states that actually have, you know, are 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 more advanced in military capabilities, have these weapons, et cetera, sooner or later, by definition, need to take part in these processes for them to to be ultimately effective.
Dr. Evo, come in, sure. Um, thank you, Caesar.
Um, I should thank Caesar as well, and I was gonna ask the organizers if we would have the benefit of uh Caesar's presentation uh shared with us, because I something I I would like to be uh using from time to time. Uh, and I was, I was a bit, um, yeah, the question in terms of the hierarchy of which is doable. Yeah, it strikes me that is a very tough, maybe even unfair question, because they are so interlinked. Um, and I find really this five are crucial points that we can all borrow from. But I was gonna talk about, you know, this, I can paraphrase Caesar, this uh idea of fo- follow the money, so to speak. Uh, and to say that con- conversion is is all well and good. But in terms of the premise of politics, economic incentive is driven by political rationale. So in a world in which honestly, both within states and between states, we have rising insecurity, um, it's 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 something that is easier said than done. Uh, because there is a lot of justification uh for, you know, increasing skyrocketing military expenditure. Uh, and it's interesting that military expenditure does not necessarily uh make us feel safer. It is military, it's not security. There's a huge gap between the two. The threat that we face is security, not necessarily military. But it is the prof, it is the political driver of uh almost a zero-sum game uh that is driving uh the the money aspect. So as much as one wants to be hopeful about conversion thinking, uh, the reality just holds you back. I I I don't want to be negative, but it's difficult to miss. Uh, it's so, it's so, you you know, we are almost enveloped in this uh debilitating reality. You know, that conversion at the end of the day sounds almost academic. I'm sorry.
Dan, would you like to come in? Thank you.
If I might, Martin, uh, very quickly, uh, I appreciate both the presentations very much. And certainly take note of Dr. Evo's um uh point about what might be hoped for in the Summit for the Future with respect to a a general open-ended working group looking at disarmament. Um, I certainly note that that perspective, going to Caesar's very useful um five points, and I won't respond in in kind and in detail. But personally, I would very much like to see my taxes reduced um, as a result of reduced armaments. And I think rather than having a discussion about whether I might my hard-earned tax dollars might be spent better on development or health services, I'd like to have them back in my pocket first. Um, and I think that that the the tax reduction argument, which works well with respect to every other form of service of service, should be deployed with respect to armaments, which brings us back to, you know, whether one can be uh secure, of course, and uh, I appreciate Dr. Ever's points on this. Um, I think that rather than looking at future technologies, we should spend a lot more looking at current technologies and that right now um, American advanced conventional strategic weapons rarely negate both the Chinese and Russian deterrence. And this is the uh issue that dare not speak its name in public. Uh, and that from that perspective, both the Russians and the Chinese, as they do say, but are never taken up on it, um, have a point when they talk about the need to deal with currently fielded advanced west western conventional weapons. And with respect to some of the other ideas within our project, we do address that. And I think that provides a major state interest in addressing um key issues of advanced and currently deployed missile technologies. Because for reasons of geography and technology, the Russians and the Chinese continue to be utterly outclassed by the the United States. So uh, that's a question of partly of the private sector, partly of the complex and partly of um uh military industrial complex. Um, but thank you very much for your timely and pointed um comments, Caesar.
Okay, thank thanks, Dan. And and thank you to to both of our speakers there and Dr. Evo, indeed, the the session has been recorded and and we will make sure to um get a transcript of of Caesar's presentation to you so that you can um, you know, use it, use it as you as you wish. Um. Right, we we are going to move on now to our, the the third session of today's consultation um on options for overcoming the impasse and initiating preparations for SSOD four. I think it's an excellent follow-on to the the two presentations that we have just heard. Um, we're uh um, very lucky that um we have two or three, rather, sorry, outstanding pres- presenters um, in in this session. Um, first of all, um, Paul Meyer is adjunct professor of international studies at Simon Fraser University, a director of the Canadian Pugwash Group and former Canadian ambassador for disarmament. He'll be followed um by His Excellency Flavio D'Amico, current ambassador of Brazil to the Conference on Disarmament. And then Eloisa Romani, a PhD candidate at SOAS University of London and project coordinator for Scrap Weapons. So without further ado, um, Paul, I hand the word to you.
Great. Well, thank you. Uh, thank you, Martin, and I appreciate all the engagements of my fellow panelists on this subject. You know, one aspect of multilateral diplomacy which puzzles outside observers is how an an agreed objective can yet evade realization for years on end. The disconnect between goal and result is often manifested by the regrettable tactic of appearing to address the objective while in reality ignoring it. Such, I suggest, has been the fate of the fourth UN Special Session on Disarmament. The UN General Assembly occasionally holds such special sessions on specific issues. And as Dan outlined earlier, uh, three such special sessions on the devoted to disarmament were held in nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen eighty-two and nineteen eighty-eight, respectfully. And set out a blueprint for the UN's disarmament machinery. The expectation was that this series would be followed by a fourth special session. And indeed, the end of the Cold War era in the early nineteen nineties uh suggested that this was uh an opportune time to move ahead and convene the specials session, the fourth special session. And, you know, as Caesar reminded us earlier, the importance of a state champions for ideas. While at that point in time, the non-aligned movement was a very effective champion of the desirability of convening the fourth special session on disarmament. And we had in nineteen ninety-four uh the initial resolution adopted by the General Assembly without a vote, I should emphasize, that it declared that this fourth special session should, in principle, be convened in nineteen ninety-seven with a date to be determined by the General Assembly uh in its fiftieth session the next year. A process seemed to have been launched, and the nineteen ninety-five session featured a new resolution establishing a preparatory committee to prepare a draft agenda and submit its recommendations to the next session of the General Assembly. This PREPCOM, to use the abbreviation common in uh the UN circles, which I should point out is the normal mechanism by which a UN conference or session is organized, was to convene a short organizational meeting and set a date for its substantive session. On the surface, all seemed to be in order, but the resolution setting out this path had not been endorsed by all. In fact, there were two votes against and forty-nine abstentions indicating reticence in some quarters for the initiative. At the fifty-first session, a further resolution was adopted, which stipulated that SSOD four would be convened in nineteen ninety-nine, but with a caveat, quote, "subject to the emergence of a consensus on its objectives and agenda," end of quotation. The promised PREPCOM was to convene before the end of the session, decide on an exact date for SSOD four and report on its progress to the following year's General Assembly. Opposition to the resolution was quite muted this time, no objections and only five abstentions. Although I hasten to add that among those abstantees were the UK, the United States and France, all three permanent members of the Security Council. The PREPCOM envisioned was not actually held, and by the time when the fifty-second session of the General Assembly was convened in nineteen ninety-seven, the mechanism had disappeared from the resolution altogether, with the Disarmament Commission being asked to set an exact date for SSOD four and decide, decide on organizational matters. The next thirteen years repeated this runaround with the goal of SSOD four becoming something of a mirage, receding in time on each occasion when the General Assembly approached the subject again. In twenty-ten, at the sixty-fifth session, a new variant on the In twenty-ten, at the sixty-fifth session, a new variant on the circular theme was approved by Resolution sixty-five slash sixty-six. Which expressed, quote, deep concern that SLD four had yet to be convened. And authorized an open-ended working group, yet another mechanism. To consider objectives and agenda and, quote, the possible establishment of a preparatory committee, end of quote. This working group duly convened in the years twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. And managed to agree a consensus report specifying objectives and agenda for the SSOD four. While ducking once again the issue of a preparatory committee. The report stating, and I quote, "The working group decided to defer the issue of the possible establishment. Of a preparatory committee to the General Assembly," end of quotation. In brief, the crucial decision on initiating a preparatory process was punted. Once again to the General Assembly. Since twenty seventeen, this kind of yo-yo diplomacy has continued with annual resolutions. That express appreciation for all the good work done by the earlier opening open-ended working group. And then decide to, quote, encourage member states to continue consultations. On the next steps for the convening of the fourth special session on of the General Assembly devoted to disarmament. End of quotation. These consultations, if they are ever held, are feckless as no real progress is made on convening. The special session. While all delegations concerned can pat themselves on the back for achieving another consensus resolution. Ensuring no real action is taken on SLD four. While being able to check the box on this agenda item for another year. In my opinion, uh the SSOD four has become the subject of a ritualized process. That pays lip service to the desirability of the goal while doing nothing to bring it about. This approach is a mockery of multilateral diplomacy and cries out for remedial action. The existing UN disarmament machinery is rusting out and largely dysfunctional. As Secretary-General Guterres has stated in his New Agenda for Peace, it is overdue for review and reform. It is time to break this cynical cycle of perpetual consultations. And initiate a preparatory committee for SSOD four. It is only under the pressure and scrutiny generated by actual open negotiation. Will states be pressed to compromise and the dynamic and potential. Of the special session on disarmament be achieved? Thank you.
Thank you very much, but um. A presentation full of food for thought and. I, without um further ado, I will um ask Ambassador D'Amico to. Uh, please make his presentation.
Hey, everybody, and I feel a little bit humbled by uh the presentations that uh. Uh, took place before mine and in particular the last presentation by Ambassador Meyer. Uh, who has so eloquently put uh. Uh, in evidence the fact that uh. Uh, the convening of an SSOD four is more necessary than ever. Also, I wish to pay tribute to Professor Plash for setting the scene so well. And also to the very interesting points that have been made by both Caesar Haramidio, my good friend, and also Dr. Evo. When I had the pleasure to be with him in many occasions. Uh. Well, let's see where we can start. I mean, there was this old saying that war is too important to be left to the generals. And I think that to a certain extent, uh. Disarmament negotiations are too important to be left at the device of the military and industrial complex. Uh, the way I see uh the disarmament negotiations going is that. In a way, they have been dominated by the producers of insecurity. Rather than to be to the benefit of the entire international community. As Dr. Evo has uh so eloquently uh highlighted. The need for inclusion and representativeness. So the fact is that the consumers of security. Are being are being left without a voice. And so the fact is that uh throughout. Every disarmament process, and in particular within the Conference on on Disarmament. We witness circumstances in which uh different military powers succeed each other. In find in finding excuses uh to move processes forward. Without very little accountability and without uh taking the responsibility for. Political responsibility for their acts. And then I could not agree more with Ambassador Meyer that uh. Uh, the situation of the disarmament machinery is. Uh, absolutely untenable and that it's it's a. Uh, a system that is operating on fumes and that is solidly lacking in outcomes. But I do also agree with Caesar. Uh, that we should not see the convening of the SSOD four as a holy grail. That it will by itself sort out problems that have been accumulating over many and many years. What we see this as a catalyst for action that would enable us to revisit. Uh. Consensus and considerations that have been in place for almost five decades. Uh, and to a certain extent, the fact that the first SSOD. Was so successful that it became a foundational text of disarmament. That nowadays, the line of resistance of the most articulate. Uh, people in the opposition of the idea of the SSOD four is this. Well, we had at least some very good key ideas and very good concepts in place. So perhaps if we start something of a new. We run the risk of ending up with a situation that is much worse than the one that we actually have right now. And then, of course, they are playing into the fears that the current international circumstance. In which multilateralism is not at its highest app. Uh, that we may end up having an outcome that is uh. Not satisfactory at all. Uh. The other other question that have been put in this panel, and I believe that it's a very important one, is the one of leadership and. I have to indicate again that we, as Brazil, we do not claim leadership of that. We are merely jumping into the bandwagon because we do believe that this is an idea whose time has come. But of course, also, it's an idea that has a number of fathers. But actually, as Ambassador Meyer has been uh quite good in indicating it is um. The delivery of this baby has been postponed for quite some time. And the pen holders of this uh effort, the champions have been. Has been the non-aligned movement. And I believe that they have been exercising quite well this. Process of leadership of the convening the SSOD four. Up to a point in which they perhaps start to have some doubts as to what would be the exact meaning. Of the concept of non-alignment in a new international scenario. And that what would be the repercussions of the. Of being intellectual leaders in a process that will uh. Uh, forge this new identity that might uh put. To a risk the internal cohesion of the movement. So uh. What we have in front of us is clearly an intergovernmental process that can be very um. Can that can be assisted by international mobilization. And particularly the one by the civil society that will be capable of pushing some governments into moving away from their. Um, position of reluctance, particularly in the western countries. So uh, we do not see this as an exercise that uh is uh. Merely state-centric, it has to have uh. Uh, many uh different um. Uh. Efforts being carried out simultaneously so as to generate uh. An overall perception that we have got to the point of no return. Evidently, the document from the Secretary-General, the New Agenda for Peace. And the process of the summit uh. Uh, Summit of the Future have been essential in catalyzing. The international public opinion and it will eventually uh become. A point that needs to be tackled. And we see our efforts in trying to mobilize the opinion of our colleagues. And friends from the non-aligned movement as something that is essential to generate. Uh, the necessary momentum that would enable us to initiate the SSOD four. Uh, via eventually either the convening of an uh working group that will enable. The convening of the prepcon or the convening of the prepcon itself. Uh, we see that over many years, we. The the pen holders have equivocated around this the subject. But I think that the time for procrastination has already passed. Uh, we have to convince people that we don't have a final blueprint as to how. The UN machinery will look like after the process. I think that there will be, I would say, a healthy competition of different ideas. Uh, but we do not see that the current structure is tenable. But also, we agree with the comments that were made here, particularly by Dr. Able, that. Uh, in itself, having a new machinery will generate. Uh, that will be the uh a holy grail that will find uh. Uh, an outcome that will satisfy everybody at the same time. Uh, we know and see that a number of complicating factors, in particular the issue of. Uh, new technologies that are um. Uh, generating strategic stability. So uh political stability, strategic stability, uh. Uh, I would say also something that it's important to have in mind. That we should not only conquer the hearts and minds of the major powers, but also that some regional conflicts might be. Uh, even more difficult to tackle than the competition between, let us say, the United States, Russia and China. There'd also be important resistances uh in in certain regions. So this is a very complicated scenario, but having initiated this process, I think that. Uh, there is a very, it is very difficult to find ways to be against it. But of course, uh, the. The toolbox of diplomacy is full of uh. Um, instruments for procrastination and we do should not rule out that they may. Again, uh, show up with force. Uh. I do not think that, again, that the SSOD four will be a magic one that will sort out our process. But we have the belief that at least we will be in a much stronger position in the future. To tackle what I believe are the main uh uh problems. Uh, in the area of disarmament machinery. The first one, as I mentioned very early in my intervention, is the fact that. You have to give voice to the consumers of security. And the second aspect, I think that we have to have some sort of horizontal review. Of how states are fair in terms of transparency, uh accountability. And compliance with treaties and try to at least have some instances in which. Uh, the silos in which the different legal and diplomatic regimes exist. Because, as you know, uh, security is not indivisible. Members do not compete in just one type of weapons, they compete in all weapon systems. Uh, but of of course, also having in mind the notion that unfortunately. We are in a period in which the peace dividend is gone. And there is ample room for member states to increase their share of the GDP. That is devoted to military expenditures. So it's more or less like we've, I I feel very much like if we were. Uh, the three hundred Greeks in the Thermopylae that we are better fight. Fighting under the shade of the many arrows that the Persians are throwing at us. But I still do not believe that we have reasons to despair. Uh, because the cause that we are uh fighting for is just one. It's time has come and it's a matter of trying to persevere, but also being um. Aware of the fact that we should not be limited to only intergovernmental means. That this has to be a broad front uh that will uh. Uh, raise this flag. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ambassador, for an excellent thought-provoking presentation. Um, although I I have to say, I think you're. Being too modest when you say that. Um, at the moment in the UN, you're not a leader in the field of disarmament. It's it's clearly, clearly you are. Um, so thank you for that as well. And fine, now for our final presentation of the evening, I'll ask Eloisa Romani to um to come in. You have the floor, always.
Uh, thank you very much, Martin, and good morning and good afternoon, and I would like to thank you all for being here. Um, as project coordinator of Scrap Weapons, I would like to provide a brief introduction to our disarmament project. And explain why we think that the special session on disarmament is a better forum than the Conference on Disarmament. To advance negotiations and discussions about reforming the disarmament machinery. And then I'm going to share some reflections about possible ways for overcoming the impasse and initiating preparation for an SSOD four. Uh, so Scrap Weapons is a disarmament project developed at SOAS University of London. With the objective to refrain the debate around general complete disarmament. This emphasizes the need to focus not only on the elimination of weapons of mass destruction, but also on the limitation of all types of conventional weapons. And the development of confidence and security building measures. Um, Scrap has been especially campaigning in the past two years. To build a global consensus among states and civil society organizations. To propose the reactivation of the disarmament mechanism of the UN General Assembly of special sessions of disarmament. We have also submitted a proposal for activating a special session of disarmament to the UN Secretariat last January. At the time when the consultation for the new Agenda for Peace, uh, list of brief were going on. And the Secretary-General later has incorporated our recommendation in the New Agenda for Peace, which marks. Quite an important milestone and a benchmark for our project. Um. Then, we believe that there are specific advantages of advancing disarmament negotiations. Within the purview of a special session on disarmament as opposed to the Conference on Disarmament. Uh, first of all, the Conference on Disarmament is mainly tasked with negotiating treaties and not with assessing the problems obstructing the advancement of disarmament. More generally, the Conference on Disarmament is a separate entity that is only given a mandate from the General Assembly. But the latter should be the main forum for discussing disarmament matters directly within the UN. Through special session on disarmament, which are in fact an instrument of the UN General Assembly. Then another advantage of special session on disarmament is that as a mechanism of the General Assembly. Decision-making would not need to operate under the rule of consensus, which is the procedure operating at the Conference on Disarmament. And which is responsible for solid negotiations. and which is responsible for solid negotiations mostly. So consensus as a rule of procedure never allows the majority to have a vote and it may be argued that it is a de facto veto power. Instead, the Charter of the United Nations stipulates for the work of the General Assembly to take decisions by two-thirds majority. A further issue relating to the Conference on Disarmament is that it lacks universal representation because it includes only sixty-five UN member states and it may then be inferred that it lacks legitimacy in decision making. The conception of legitimacy globally has evolved and the Conference on Disarmament should be more inclusive of states from the Global South. Furthermore, the Conference on Disarmament should abolish the practice of regional groups, which have proven to be inefficient and conceal international positions and cross-regional groups that are based on focusing on priorities rather than military alliances or geographical locations can be better tools for facilitating progress. We also believe that a special session on disarmament would provide more flexibility in terms of including more issues in its agenda than the Conference on Disarmament can take and facilitate discussions about issues that have often been sidelined, such as incorporating intersectional feminist approaches to disarmament that place women and girls at the center of the tension and recognize that conflict is a highly gender activity. In fact, from the use of sexual violence as a weapon of war to enduring any economic burdens, women are always disproportionately affected by conflicts. Disarmament is a key area of action to tackle the patriarchal structure, inequalities that normalize the status of women and girls as well as people with non-binary identities as passive recipients of the culture and practice of war, particularly supported by the military industrial complex that drives economies in the global north. Then a special session disarmament could focus on strengthening disarmament policies, especially regarding small arms and light weapons to better tackle most forms of gender and household violence that affects then accounted everyday lived realities of marginalized groups around the world, especially in conflict areas. For a special session on disarmament, we think we facilitate discussion, for example, on the global applicability of the Kinshasa Convention for the control of small arms and light weapons in Central Africa, the agenda of silencing the guns in Africa or the code of conduct of the Central American states relating to transfer of arms, ammunition explosive and other related materials, among others. Then we believe that a special session on disarmament will provide opportunities for cross-fertilization of the best practices developed from the successful implementation of regional nuclear weapons free zones, including those in the regions of South America, Africa, Southeast Asia, Central Asia and the South Pacific. Finally, following discussions with other disarmament organizations that we recently had in Geneva, such as Control Arms and QNO, we believe that it is crucial to integrate the component on human rights discourse into the disarmament agenda. And this would also benefit the Human Rights Council because it is crucial to consider disarmament as a prerequisite to materially defend the rights of marginalized communities. Furthermore, the Human Rights Council is a subsidiary body of the UN General Assembly. Therefore, convening a special session on disarmament under the umbrella of the General Assembly would also provide a procedural link to integrate the human rights and disarmament agendas. And at this point, I would like to present a few points for overcoming the impasse and initiating preparation for a special session on disarmament. First, a coalition of countries is necessary to request the General Assembly to activate it, to activate a special session on disarmament. And as it seems that no one has hoped actually in the Conference on Disarmament to overcome the impasse. So at Scrap, we are trying to build a global consensus and a civil society coalition to support states that wish to propose a resolution in the next first committee sessions of the UN General Assembly in October this year, focusing on the creation of a preparatory committee or an open and working group that can work on convening a special session on disarmament. And to give effect to the clear political will for progress, we believe in particular that a date for a special session on disarmament should be established and we propose 2026 possibly. And then once a resolution for a preparatory committee is approved, the committee should consider whether to update the objectives and agenda for a special session on disarmament that have already been defined by the open-ended working group that was led by Indonesia on behalf of the Non-Aligned Movement in 2017. And in this regard, it's important to highlight that the objectives and agenda already exist on the table for the preparatory committee to discuss. It's only political will to move ahead is necessary. And so just as a concluding note, I would like to highlight that disarmament has been indeed part of the UN's identity throughout its existence from the Atlantic Charter and UN Declaration on nineteen forty-two onwards and it should remain so. And with this, I would like to thank you for the attention and happy to take any questions along with other panelists. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eloisa, for that eloquent presentation of the proposals coming from Scrap. We do indeed have one very interesting question from an anonymous attendee addressed to all three panelists for this session and I think we can get three different kinds of responses since we have a current diplomat who sits in that camp, a current civil society representative in Eloisa and then Paul Meyer, who sits with a foot in both camps as a civil society representative and a professional diplomat. So the question is, first thanking all speakers for the presentations today and for illustrating all the aspects of the journey to a special session on disarmament. What can civil society's role be moving forward and how can we contribute effectively? Paul, would you maybe like to go first?
Sure, I'll take a stab at that and of course it is an important dimension as Ambassador Damico emphasized. You have to go beyond the pure intergovernmental process. You know, we need to bring this matter in a sense before the publics of the world, the consumers of security as he framed it. And there are, I think, a number of paths there that could be examined. One is simply to direct the spotlight on this current, frankly, I think, charade of multilateral diplomacy, which only serves to further delegitimize the credibility of this. So there's an element, as we've noted elsewhere, where in fact, civil society has been very well, very effectively acting as a monitor on the actions or inactions of states regarding their commitments. And I think this is a case where that kind of scrutiny could be very helpful. I would also note using existing, you might say, approved or authorized channels. There's a commitment to promote disarmament education under the UN auspices. And I think we have to do much more with that in ensuring that particularly youth are exposed through educational opportunities to what the current challenges and state of disarmament is. And I think just that form of education will bring out the very unsatisfactory current state of affairs when it comes to achieving disarmament relating to long-agreed objectives of the international community. To agree that we can, of course, entice the media to pay some attention to these matters, that's always been a challenging tactic for civil society. But I think it's one where in some ways the deterioration of the international security environment and the increase in anxiety and fear that that does lead to can perhaps ironically bring attention to this subject matter in a way that it hasn't in the past. So those are sort of three off the top of my head suggestions as how civil society could play a useful role in this context. Thanks.
Thank you. Ambassador Damico, is it? How do you see the role of civil society? How can we be helpful to you in your work?
Oh, absolutely. I see the civil society playing a central role in mobilizing public opinion and governments in democratic societies. Open societies are the ones that would respond almost promptly to the organization of civil societies and initiatives geared towards organizing the public perceptions and, sorry, and being able to get parliaments involved and other agents of the society to indicate to the governments that it would be good that they move in a certain direction. This is a very important aspect. I would say also that there is, of course, an imbalance here that in certain states, the civil society cannot play a similar role and they also, they have votes and they count into the process of getting as close as possible to a consensus regarding a certain multilateral objective like the convening of the SSOD IV. In this case, I think that there is also, I would say, a form of social civil society in the international community, which is comprised by the non-aligned movement. There's a number of key members that would have enormous difficulty in going against a consensus that is capable of being formed within the non-aligned movement. And this would have an important repercussion in certain countries in which perhaps the civil society is not in a position to be very important. So I think that we have to think this is a sort of a two-pronged approach. Civil society is important in open societies and they will be absolutely central in creating this critical mass. And if we're able to have, let's say, North America and Europe fully mobilized and also I know that they play an important role also in mobilizing Latin American countries. And then this group of countries is capable of, along with, let us say, Southeast Asian countries, to operate better within the non-aligned movement, then we'll see that there is a path to generating a newly emerging consensus that will create the necessary momentum. I mean, we would certainly notice that I have mentioned as close as possible to consensus, I'm not saying full consensus. I think that we have to be realistic that some state-centric views are very firm and I see with difficulty that they will ever be in a position to join this consensus. But we also can think that if this process, I would say, is more of a critical mass than one in which we have to necessarily agree to consensus, particularly because if we were to actually put consensus as our main objective, we might end up negotiating with ourselves and ending up with a result that might be too watered down to be really effective. Thank you.
Eloisa, before I ask you to come in just for a second, Dr. Ibo has just made a post in the webinar chat. And Dr. Ibo, I'd like to just to ask you maybe to reflect in a few words on that post and on the relationship that you see between UN ODA, between the UN and civil society and the importance of that.
Thank you very much. I didn't want to, you know, provoke any question. I was just expressing my sincere appreciation. Honestly, this was like, for me, I think it's been for me the most enriching conversation I've had on this subject. In terms of civil society, honestly, and I think Ambassador Damico would bear me out, is one of those areas, and I think multi-stakeholder approaches more broadly, is one of those areas, as I said, that member states have not yet got a handle on. Because there's an issue on which there is no consensus. But the reality is that it is civil society that helps us to narrow the gap between legality and legitimacy. The voices that they bring, you know, this is what helps us to really assure ourselves of the quality control as to whether what we are hearing ourselves discuss in the UN are the voices of just state and government or voices of the people. So it is in our assessment, an essential ingredient in what should be credible multilateralism. But as Ambassador Damico said, it's easier said than done. And that is why we are so humble as to always say that as close to consensus as possible. So it's an essential ingredient to what extent it is possible. I have to throw the ball back to political masters because if the door is not open to society, what can the secretariat do? The secretariat is not the United Nations. The secretariat is the servant of the member states who are the United Nations. That is a dilemma matter that we have. And I guess those of us who are here have to find creative ways of, you know, reminding member states of the legitimacy that civil society bring without irritating them. So it, I'm sorry, I don't have an easy answer to your, to the question, but those are my thoughts while trying to be, you know, too diplomatic, but that's what I could say.
No, those are indeed interesting thoughts. Thank you and helpful. Eloisa.
Yes, thank you. So I will try to be brief and specific. First of all, we have been trying to build a global consensus in the past two years and we have had some benchmark of success which have been quite encouraging. And the first one has been the incorporation of our proposition of having a special session on disarmament in the New Agenda for Peace Policy Brief of the Secretary General. And so, you know, civil society can actually make a change. And I would suggest to send inputs, like whenever there is, you know, requests from the UN Secretariat. And in particular, for the Summit of the Future, we also sent our proposal for the special session on disarmament and we would suggest any other civil society organization to support us in requesting to have a disarmament component in the Summit of the Future as well as in any multilateral fora. And so I think that civil society can actually make a difference and we are being listened to. And I will also suggest any civil society activists to stay in touch with us and also with Ambassador Paul Meyer. We were trying again to form this global movement and we have been also very supportive of Brazil and Ambassador Damico has been really at the forefront of, you know, pushing the disarmament agenda forward and a special session on disarmament along with Indonesia. So I would suggest to build, to join us in this effort.
Thank you. Dan, you've got your hand up. Come on in, please.
Well, just to say, as you see in the chat, we very much hope that participants, panelists and friends will make use of the opportunity to sign up to the open letter to the UN in support of the Summit for the Future adopting a strong support for the SSOD IV. And I'm sure if you haven't already, you will want to circulate that amongst members. But with that, wanted to take over your role, Martin. I just really want to thank everybody for their contributions. And we will of course have a recording of this, which you'll be able to distribute to friends and family and acquaintances. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Dan. So I'd just like to call on you for a second. I know you've got a lot of experience of working in different coalitions. I mean, obviously as well as working at the national level, but I think perhaps if you could, to build on this question on the role of civil society, just say a little bit about the role of international coalitions in building agreements.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Martin. Yes, I think, I mean, I'd go back to the word used a couple of minutes ago by Dr. Ebo of legitimacy. I think that the presence of civil society brings a very concrete demonstrable degree of legitimacy to these processes, to the point that the alternative, not having civil society in, and this has not always been the case, but today not having civil society in a major multilateral disarmament process would be tantamount to, you know, to having an imperfect process. And I think it would be perceived as a process that was not representative, that didn't have enough diversity, et cetera. I would, in the experience of our work with coalitions, including ICANN, Control Arms, Killer Robots Campaign, the International Network on Explosive Weapons. Going back to the issue of state champions, I think that partnership between civil society and state champions has proved to be quite useful. In some senses, we... I don't want to say, because I don't think it, but the expression that came to my mind was doing the dirty work. But that's not exactly it. But oftentimes, civil society says things that states cannot say, even though they want it to be said in the room, you know. So civil society has a little bit more, more, you know, we're not bound by the traditional parameters of the foreign ministries or the dictates of capital, et cetera. But we do see alignment with several states. And I think civil society actually is a vehicle through which, you know, certain ideas can be put on the table and can be expressed. But it is not, and just to wrap up, it's not just symbolic. And I want to emphasize this point, that the presence of civil society is not just symbolic in these processes. I believe civil society, and I'm of course biased because I'm in this sector, but civil society brings real expertise to these issues. I mean, and institutional memory and subject matter memory. And because of the rotational nature of many, if not most, foreign services, you often see a situation whereby, you know, certain diplomats come and they sort of are new to the area. And once they become experts in the area, it's time for the rotation. So they're posted somewhere else and a new diplomat comes in. And I think civil society in a way serves to, you know, to maintain the integrity and continuity of some of these processes because there is less mobility in my personal experience, there is less mobility in civil society. And you know this, Martin, you know, how long have we been following the Armstrong Treaty? And it's really decades of work, et cetera. And I think that diplomats recognize this oftentimes and that makes for a very constructive partnership.
Thank you. Interesting thoughts there. Well, I think seeing no further questions, we are reaching the end of what has been an absolutely fascinating set of discussions. I'd like to thank all of our speakers very much. You've been stimulating and thoughtful throughout. So it's been excellent. And as a final thought, maybe I'll reflect on the the words of the late, great Frank Blackaby, a founder of CIPRI, a member of Pugwash, and who, when I was leaving the UK to go to Brussels many years ago, said to me that "We've chosen to work in an extremely difficult field, one where we will spend decades of our lives banging our heads against a brick wall. And it therefore behooves us to find the brick in the wall that is a little less resistant to the pressure of our head than the more solid part." And therefore, my hope is that with discussions like this and with an alliance between states and international organizations and civil society, we can knock, pop the brick out the wall for a fourth special session on disarmament in the not-too-distant future. So thank you very much, everybody.